Hello. Okay, may gahapon. Pag-usap, session be back to order. May we proceed? Um, I'd like to request our Madam Secretary kindly... Basahan lang sa angkuan.
Hello. Okay, for the standing committees, let's start on the Committee on Appropriation and Finance, chaired by Honorable Damiel Kapirig, Vice Chairman Honorable Catherine Turalba, members Honorable Garcia, Ramos and Chong.
Padayon. Yes, uh... The Honorable Turalba. Okay. Okay, go ahead. Okay, there's a motion.
For reorganization of the current, uh, standing committees of the Sangunyang Bayan of Ipil.
Okay, there's a motion being introduced by the Honorable Turalba, duly seconded by the Honorable Garcia. Okay, discussion. Okay, go ahead Madam Secretary for the Committee on Appropriation and Finance. As is?
As is?
As is.
Okay, for Committee on Ways and Means, chaired by Honorable Sheriffin Ramos, Vice Chairman Honorable Damiel Kapirig, members Catherine Turalba, Dangpalan and Nuega.
Okay, so manan niyang bago. Okay, next.
Committee on Rules and Ordinances chaired by Honorable Catherine Turalba, Vice Chair Honorable Munipredo Chong, members Dangpalan, Ramos, Bual. Committee on Public Safety, Security Order and LDRRM, chaired by Honorable Munipredo Chong, Vice Chair Turalba, members Hasim, Bual, Nuega.
Gugu. Padayon.
Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountability. Wala.
Okay, this was formerly being chaired by the Honorable Dara Katalunya? Dara, no?
Oo.
Okay, about, uh, what's the pleasure of the Honorable Dayan Katalunya?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will take the committee on good governance and public ethics.
Okay, please.
For the Vice Chair, we have Honorable Farida Dangpalan, members Sabihoon, Hasim, Ramos.
Okay, rakan, in the members.
Are you...
Uh, yes.
Okay with the members?
Uh, I'm okay with the committee members.
Committee on Health and Sanitation chaired by Honorable Farida Dangpalan, Vice Chair Honorable Catherine Turalba, members Sabihoon, Hasim, Kapirig.
Health, Honorable.
Yes. Vice Chair ka? Okay, rani, kuwan, Vice Chair Turalba, okay rakan. Member na lang po ka sa Committee on Health?
So, mo sobra na, may kuhaon o sa?
Sobra?
Sobra man. Sa may kuhaon ano?
Ang... Di ba chairman, manong feeling, chairman member?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the chairman, we will now give the floor to the chairman.
Members Sabihoon, Hasim, Kapirig and Turalba. Na ay...
Sobra isa.
Mr. Chair, pwede ako.
Rakan?
Pwede ako ang mo, ang magawa.
Wa sa head?
Aa.
Okay, ramga ka?
Aa. To let the Honorable Farida Dangpalan be the Vice Chair.
Okay, next.
Okay, Committee on Education, Culture and Development chaired by Honorable Damiel Kapirig, Vice Chair Ramos, members Garcia, Turalba, Sabihoon.
Okay na.
Uh, gusto na ko siya irelinguish to tell kuwan mukod ko president yapon ko rin sa PTA, so doble. And I'm very much interested, unta kuhaon ako ang housing and land utilization. In exchange for the education.
Education ka? Education ka, baylo?
Nag-iyabi tao siya school. Una, unsa...
Pwede, pwede.
Si Chair. Yes, in exchange for...
Siguro din isa, siguro ko sa...
But you're willing to relinquish the chairmanship on land use?
Pero willing ko ma-relinguish ako sa land use naman.
Sa education?
Pero I think, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, must equip ano is, uh, education kay Conseil Farida.
So, would like to ask the Honorable Dangpalan if she's willing to accept?
Kamitan education ka, dopme. Kultura.
Wala naman siyang health, uh... Okay na. I-relinguish niya, uh, ni Honorable Kapirig ang education.
Hahabot sa Vice Chair niya.
Then who'll be your, who'll be your, uh, Vice Chair, Honorable Dangpalan? Di Committee on Education, okay.
Inadri si Vice Chair Honorable Ramos.
Okay, okay rakan.
Committee on Trade and Industry chaired by Honorable Glenn Ayans Sabihoon, Vice Chair Hasim, members Dangpalan, Katalunya, Nuega.
Padayon.
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 Committee on Tourism and Public Information chaired by Honorable Sheriffin Hasim, Vice Chair Sabihoon, members Katalunya, Bual and Garcia.
Padayon.
Padayon, ryan.
Wala po siya, nilakaw. Padayon lang sa...
Committee on Infrastructure chaired by Honorable Hasim, Vice Chair Dangpalan, members Katalunya, Sabihoon, Nuega.
Laktaw?
Ma- excuse sa siya.
Infra. Infra? Willing kuwan ang infra?
Nilakaw mag-ning chairman? Pwede sa...
O ikuwan sa na siya.
Ni- excuse mag- siya, pwede. Ikuwan na lang sa niyang infra. Okay, wala mag- siya diri. Okay, next.
Honorable Mr. Chair, uh, for consideration, Mr. Chair, let me, let me explain. Uh... Namang sa business, uh, infra si Conseil Masin, it might be ang, ang kuwan conflict of interest. Muna ang, ang, ang ako ang manifestation bahin ano ni. They are giant.
Wala talaga siya. Yes, yes, Honorable Ramos. Di lang, to be, kuwan, to be... Paputon lang sa natuto siya, in fairness sa iya haba. Ato lang sang paputon kung i-relinguish niya o...
Pero kapalo, mag- siya nga nagre-ordad. Ano nihawa man siya.
Unsa na conflict?
Lagi. Wala mo sila dealings diri. Ah, sige lang, ato lang, sang i- kuwan, paputon lang po na to siya in fairness niya, basig pagbalik niya. Ganong ba, namang kuwan niya chairmanship.
I think it will also... It will also be respectful if you can hear his side, what he has to say about his chairmanship.
Yes, yes, aha.
Mo-manifest lampe ko, Mr. Chair, aware manggood si Honorable Hasim na na reorganization, but he chooses us to...
To live.
To live.
Sige, ato lang paputon ang iya ang chairmanship sa next regular session.
Okay, next. Committee on Public Utilities, Transportation chaired by Honorable Glenn Ayans Sabihoon, Vice Chair Katalunya, members Nuega, Bual, Kapirig.
Ryan?
Committee on Agriculture, Agrarian Reform chaired by Honorable Sheriffin Ramos, Vice Chair Nuega, members Bual, Sabihoon, Chong. Keragiapon, sir? Committee on Women, Children and Family chaired by Honorable Farida Dangpalan, Vice Chair Kapirig, members Katalunya, Garcia, Hasim. Moragiapon?
Ryan?
Moragiapon?
Dino.
Committee on Barangay Affairs chaired by Honorable Damiel Kapirig, Vice Chair Sosijin Garcia, members Nuega, Ramos, Dangpalan. Moragiapon? Nsya.
Oo, ako, uh, I would like also, gusto na ako sa Committee on Barangay Affairs. Uh, i-member na ako sa Doktora Katalunya, dayan si Conseil Ipil ako ang...
Sige. Committee on Youth and Sports Development chaired by Honorable Sosijin Garcia, Vice Chair Hasim, members Sabihoon, Nuega, Kapirig. Sports.
Pwede i-change si Ma'am Chan ina-ama Vice Member na si...
Committee on Human Resource and Capability Building chaired by Honorable Farida Dangpalan, Vice Chair Nuega, members Hasim, Sabihoon, Chong. Moragiapon? Committee on Cultural Tribal and Muslim Affairs chaired by Honorable Rashid Bual, Vice Chair Farida Dangpalan, members Hasim, Garcia, Nuega. Keragiapon? Committee on Housing and Land Utilization chaired by Honorable Glenn Ayans Sabihoon, Vice Chair Hasim, members Ramos, Dangpalan. Land use.
Vice Chair, nako si Conseil Turalba. Oh, wala pa mung di ay.
Land use.
Mr. Chair, I would like na i-relinguish nilang tuwan, Honorable Kapirig, sa land use.
Okay. Kesa ibang Vice Chair.
Conseil Turalba.
Okay.
Ulangan mo ni kuwan sa...
Si Conseil Hasim.
Si Vice Chair, si Conseil Turalba. Kesa si Chairman di?
Siya?
Ako.
Uh, tanong ko sinabi.
Saktura.
Saktura, saktura. Committee on Market.
Kisa niya nahan.
Imo sa...
Committee on Market chaired by Honorable Catherine Turalba, Vice Chair Kapirig, members Chong, Nuega, Ramos.
Swap, swap sa... Okay, padayon.
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 Committee on Science, Information, Communication and Technology chaired by Honorable Juan Pablo Nuega, Vice Chair Glenn Ayans Sabihoon, members Bual, Dangpalan, Chong. Dayon.
Tablet, tablet pa.
Science, scientist. Padayon.
Committee on Senior Citizens and PWD.
Padayon.
Chairman.
Padayon, padayon.
Honorable Sheriffin Ramos, Vice Chair Chong, members Bual, Dangpalan, Nuega.
Padayon.
I require you, day niya, asta member mga senior naman? Au, ay una muna si Pio.
Siya re-junior.
Saki sanggunyang katigula.
Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood Chairman Honorable Sheriffin Ramos, Vice Chair Hasim, members Sabihoon, Dangpalan, Kapirig. Moragiapon, sir?
Go off livelihood.
Padayon.
Committee on Environment. Oh, ano bakantiman ni?
Okay, uh...
Pwede na to naihatag ay Doktora?
What's the pleasure of the Honorable Katalunya?
Yes, I will take the chairmanship for the Committee on Environment.
Okay, your Vice Chair?
Um, I will keep the present, uh, members of the committee.
Okay.
Pati Vice Chair?
Conseil Ramos.
Ramos is the Vice Chair.
Ah, yes.
Adi mo mag-away? Doc, pwede ka magbahay na.
Okay na, okay na. Ni-vouch na si Honorable, uh... Nuega nga, di ikaw ka magmahay, ano 'yung Vice Chair?
I think it could be appropriate because Mr. Chair...
So, muna to sir.
Okay. So, mosana sa karoon.
Uh, infra na lang wala.
Oh, pending, okay. Basig di po siya mo relinquish.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For a consideration, let that tourism and infra be remained with Honorable Hasim.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Revenan, the motion is hereby approved.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'd like to... Uh, any motion for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our Madam Secretary? Na lang siya i-explain gamay.
Mr. Chair, I move to suspend the rules.
Okay, rule suspended.
To accommodate our Sangunyang Secretary.
Rule suspended.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Uh, kagahapon na ay SGLG pre-assessment and pre-evaluation. In preparation sa final nga-evaluation for Ipil sa SGLG karong June 6. June 6. So, so far as, uh, reported by Ma'am Gemma, ang nakapasar lang sa fifth class municipality ang talusan.
Convert. Convert. Okay, kindly move. Okay, a second to the motion, this body be converted to Committee of the Seconded by the Honorable Turalba. Uh, Garcia. Objection? Any objection they have? And the motion is hereby approved. Okay, this... Body is now being converted to Committee of the Hall. So, go ahead.
Amidatory ordinance? For, for second reading?
Direction na?
Direction na?
It, add, by addition, by addition?
Move na lang na to ni.
Yes, kindly move.
I saw move, Mr. Chair. To amend.
By addition?
By, by, by addition, inclusion. Of... The area or the place? The area. For the same use and distribution of... Fire crackers and other fire protection devices providing notice thereof.
Which, asang area, na nay na identify?
Uh, so, uh, ano, uh...
Sila nay ma-identify?
We will request the local chief executive. Kai... Uh, Mr. Chair, uh... This reflects on the, uh... Sa to ang luson sa Ipil. It might be, or maybe, with an executive order. Pero ang mga determine ano ni ang BPLO? BPLO? Ah, uh... Let's be, let's be, uh, specific. Let the local chief executive...
Identify.
Ngamo identifying, determine the place on where it will be established.
Okay. Okay, a second to that. Seconded, so discussion? Any amendment to the amendment? Objection? Revenan, the motion is hereby approved. Wala na. Okay, uh, going back to the regular session, up and balik. Okay, other matters?
Other ma...
Yes, Honorable Dangpala?
I move for the suspension of the rules, Honorable Chair.
Okay, rule suspended.
I move for a resolution endorsing and approving the request of the barangay council of Bangkiruhan to the DSWD for a provision of multi-purpose collapsible tent with medical and disaster response equipments.
A second to the motion? Duly surrendered by the Honorable Bual, discussion? Any amendments, objection? Revenan, the motion is hereby... Honorable Bual?
I, I move to suspend the rule. Uh, I pass a resolution, uh, strongly endorsing the official representation of General Area as a barangay IPMR of barangay tinan Ipil Sambongasibogay for the second term.
Okay, a second to the motion? Duly surrendered by Honorable Nuega, discussion? Any amendments?
Discussion na?
Yes, discussion.
Inang lan? Is that a pre-requisite?
May we ask the Honorable Bual?
Inang lan siya, sir? Inang lan siya?
Yes, sir, kay, ay, yes, kay, uh, kuli... Ga, pasanis sa sangkuwan sa NCIP. Wala nila kidawat ang, ang ato adayon, and the rest ilang kidawat. So, hopefully, to sa Sangunyang Bayan, uh, may land yet, may land. Kay, kung magdetenis sa NCIP, so katong dele bitaw nga... Bull sa ilang kuwan, uh, kiliran, so, listen makabil. So, to sa Sangunyang Bayan, ako niyipabot para ang tanan manggod ang Sangunyang Bayan maka-determine. Either, to da, kuwan meron nasalo or wala sa batagang balakod.
Okay, so...
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Honorable Kapirig.
Mag-inquire lang ko cons, kasi, uh, ang amo ang IPs, di ba, nag-second term naman, then wala man siya i-ginahanglanan aklasing resolution. So, ganong naasat, ganong need sa tenan? Sige daw.
Kuli, kuwan siya ma, ang inyo ha, uh, in si, uh, ang gay initit ang NCIP, delisiya kuwan council builders. Pero sa role, ang authorized yet mag-recognize, mag-endorse ang council builders. Well, ang NCIP mag-facilitate, process and document. Uh, unlike sa amo ah, ang amo amang god, ang gaganit namo ang traditional, napamagit to sa council builders. Pero, uh, morag nakumpis lang ko ma, magtinon. Kay, ako nanggibuhat para more presendiri ang NCIP. Maklaro namo unsa ba ang kalainan sa barangay tinan, all the rest barangay, nga parias IP, parias sil IP.
Uh, Mr. Chair? Baka pwede na to, no, amot magkisa atong pwede i-thorough study ni siya ba kay ang amo araba sa una, grabe gud ang among pag-nagagian nga pa nag-ano gud, kanyang tungod ka ni Balay, lahi ilang process.
Okay.
Dayon, baka, tenan lang ba ang barangay? Ako, I suggest kung muhatag, manggaling tag resolution, strongly endorsing sa ilang second, padayan sa ilang term, tananon na lang siguro na to, di ba? Para...
Yes, yes, I understand the plight of the Honorable Kapirig and also na, I am confused with the, uh, resolution. It's because it's the first time that the Sangunyang Bayan of Ipil endorsing the IPMR of a certain barangay and then, um, tanapu ko kung unsa eh, uh... Kuwan, sa Sangunyang Bayan, unsa eh, ato ang morag power or... Ma-authority of the Sangunyang Bayan over that, uh... Endorsing such, uh, IPMR representative of a certain barangay. Kasi authority sa Sangunyang Bayan.
Kuli, um, kung tanaw na ko ang tinutut, ang Sangunyang Bayan, de, sila ang recognize sila power. Ano man, unauna ang, ang Sangunyang Bayan, sila ang, uh, kuwan, sila mo adapt. Matagok kuwan kanan assumption of peace. Muna ang, muna, ako niyipto na ko diri kay, kung sa Sangunyang Baya, kung sa NCIP. Uh, unauna ang Satan bangod dela karoon, uh, veteran, uh, Don Andres, uh, bang, uh, kuwan, magdaob. Ginaki na, ginakuwanan nila. So, morag, kuwan ma-morag na, iidentifay lang nila. So, kung wala, wala kuy aktion as municipal IPMR, so, ang may tabo. So, wala, walay tingog ang council builders.
So, um, with the indulgence of the Honorable Bual, if, uh, I may suggest nga, basig pwede na to siya i-lay on the table sa, then we'll invite, um, Ma'am, Mrs. Miniao siguro for reference sa ano. Okay, basig mapasa tag resolution niya, dirensa sa ato ang may tabo ba, na mo-endorse tao kuwan. Ako alam po ni nga observation, okay, first time mag- ni? Oh... Basig napuy gusto magpa-endorse niya, watag ba ulo niya, na taiki.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, the Honorable Ramos.
Uh, morispeto siguro tasablaod sa kanang indigenous.
Yeah.
Kuwan, are you, are the public aguna blawd, national law?
Yes.
Special law na siya? So, whatever mga guidelines na ikpa, ngay lang, ay nga, ilang pagasundon, mo getay matuman. Ato diri siguro, di tama iyon nga, muna mo-endorse.
Yes, yeah.
Ang ato diri, whatever, okay sa may i-recommend sa mga elders, nga muna yin napilian nila, ang ato diri... Mo, mo dawta.
Or i-recognize.
Akse, tama, i-recognize na to.
Pero delete tamo endorse.
Delete kay na namo, mo-endorse.
Endorse.
Morabag. Moreabag ato, gi be pawiran sila. Muna, that is may...
Kuwan lang, opod na, oh. So for us to be kuwan pod, to be acquainted with such...
So in that case uh it is better for us siguro nga the, the resolution na, what, what is seconded?
Yes, yes. Seconded sa discussion nga.
So we are in the period of discussion so saktong suggestion ni Honorable Mr. Mayor Mas may siguro, ilim di tibul sanato ilimitay mga, so tag mga
Opinion.
Opinion. Eh di man atone basta-basta nga ato ng mo ata tag decision dire nga, mo, mo, moreabag mo you, you sort, you so patient of our kanang function, ato silang moreag tamakanan to bang kuwan. Na ilago na katungod god, kung kense ilang mapilian, nga muna morepresent diri kung siyo, morespituhan na to. Kanan lang.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Teralba.
Uh, we are still on the period of discussion as what the Honorable Ramos has stated, that they will seek the opinion of whom?
NCIP.
Whose, whose opinion?
NCIP, I think.
NCIP?
There, there is a problem.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Teralba, yes.
Before we will uh proceed to the period of discussion, may move for five minutes recess.
Okay, recess for three minutes.
Sir?